Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, June 5th, 2023, combined public hearing work session agenda for the planning board for the Village of Southampton, New York. Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna jump to site plan review because it's just for an extension approval. We'll get that out of the way and jump into the beginning of the agenda. So... Oh, 2024, okay. I was gonna say, that ship has sailed already.
Here is the extension.
Alright. Any reason not to do a year? No? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Madam Masato was there.
Good afternoon. Mary Jane Masato, Brooklyn Masato, 21 South Main Street, Southampton, New York, for the applicant. This is actually Gil's application initially, although I came to several hearings. It's pretty straightforward. The applicant is asking for another extension. It's my understanding from Gil's communications, both with Alex and counsel.
Not this one?
Different counsel.
Different counsel. That circumstances haven't changed. We understand that you've granted extensions in the past, and we have as well as the applicant client. You really do have to proceed with a tenant. They are looking for a tenant. As you know, circumstances have changed with on-site places. So unless you have questions, I know that you have other people to speak. We respectfully request that you grant a one further extension.
Okay. I don't think any of us take issue with that. So I'd like to move that we grant an extension of site plan approval to about a year from now, June 4th, 2024, for Hampton's HDA LLC. Can we get a second, please?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you any year?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So the first item on our agenda for the work session is 550, 554 Hill Street. And let's start our deliberations.
How do you wish to proceed, Chairman? Are we gonna hear from people, and then we speak? What do we wanna do?
Um, I wanna hear from the board first.
Okay.
I guess we'll just start at the end of the... Are you comfortable with that, starting at the end and working our way down, or?
Maybe I'll let Alan do first, because he has a statement, I think.
Yeah, I have written, after 15 years of work on this, a statement which I will hand out. Everybody, I'm finished for the record. My conclusion is that I do not want to approve this application at this time. I reach it for several reasons, but the primary one is I don't think that this application, creating a meaningful change in zoning and its regulation and a lot subdivision, is bad for this board to help the, this planning board, to create for the village. Among the many items that have led me to this conclusion at this time is that I believe that no ZBA member ought to receive personal or special ZBA ruling support that compromises other future decisions and plans in the village when subdividing the few remaining village lots. I'll say parenthetically, there are not many left. We're gonna deal with some of them that are left. Secondly, no building department file exists at all for the applicant's 2005 assertions before the ARB that covered an important part of this matter. In addition, I believe with the survey before this board, of which I'm the surviving member of 15 people that have served since it began, that survey is missing. A new survey came into existence when it went back to the ZBA. The applicant obtained 2005 ARB relief despite the fact that they claimed, the fact that they claimed, the bottom end of the south end of their property was too adverse to be used routinely or in any way for a building. So they requested and got the ARB to approve. They're moving it as far as possible to the north end of the lot. Virtually every neighbor to this lot, for a long time, has objected strenuously to this going through. Almost every aspect has changed constantly over the period. When I say virtually, it's because of the neighbors that are absolutely contiguous. One neighbor has never showed up, never appeared by lawyer or otherwise. There are other neighbors, not immediately contiguous, who have objected and still do. I am also impressed with the fact that consistently, almost constantly, in favor of the applicant and all that they desired, opinions have come from the advisors, Nelson Pope and Voorhees. They're advisors to this board, they're advisors to the ZBA, they're advisors to the trustees of the village, they're advisors to the trustees of the town, and they show up from time to time working for private clients, where they're accused, and we get other counsel to come in before this board too, with no continuity, really in how we work or the longevity before, and it is a problem. They're good people. I don't mean this to single at Kathy who's done Yeoman's job, but I've dealt with all of them in different incarnations on this and other applications, including personally. There's a fundamental conflict of interest there that I think needs to weigh in this decision in ways in mind. Finally, as counsel know, I believe that when possible, the building, when we're subdividing interior lots, the building would like when it's possible for access to come with a flag lot and to create really uniquely. There's some examples that were before we had zoning, and for roads that are 35, near 40 feet wide, there were some easements have been done for multiple lots. Not to have a flag lot here is a fundamental mistake, and we're gonna face this in the future for other lots in the back of other properties on other streets in the village. So to create this precedent for longstanding, hardworking member, almost 10 years, I believe, of the ZBA is a fundamental mistake, and the governance is gonna follow. I outline six or seven things in some detail about the zoning. This is a unique lot, I will say. If you take Halsey Street, Ox pasture, Captain's Neck, and Hill Street, 5% of it as a result, really, of this lot being here for dispatch. 5% of the area covers lots that were agreed to be smaller than an acre. The applicant's own lot was turned down in 19... The only file I could find about the lot was in 1974 by this board for division into two small lots, because it was just the wrong thing to do for the neighborhood next to what he wants to do with his 120 and 40,000-foot lots. Even if we combine them properly into maybe two houses with access from Hill Street, next to him is two-acre lots, three-acre lots, five-acre lots, seven-acre lots. This whole block in that square is almost substantially large lots. Now, it'll be my children that will deal with dividing it. I've seen this happen. This is, I don't have it in this opinion, but I've seen this happen in other jurisdictions. Personally, I've seen it happen in the New Jersey seashore in my lifetime. Subdivisions are the wave of the future. There's so many people. It's gonna be difficult for the village to run, and this board will be in the middle of it. I do not believe this board is obsolete. According to the arguments made to us, once the planning board, ZBA decides, and they get a court opinion, there's nothing we can say. It's all over. That's not true. We have to do subdivision and planning. It is absolutely what we need to do. We were told by our counsel when the secret thing was approved that this would come back to us because we hadn't given up our jurisdiction to deal with the subdivision. The argument of major and minor doesn't bear fruit when it's as important as this for this neighborhood at this time. So I intend to vote no. Everybody can vote in favor of it. It's fine with me. But I think the precedent is important to set up at this time for the village and for this board going forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alan. Okay. Does anybody else want to speak? No? Okay.
Oh, okay. Well, I, my inclination after hearing all of the testimony and going all over all of the transcripts and everything that was submitted in this case was to grant the application for the subdivision and the shared driveway out to Captain's Neck lane, but only with a number of four or five conditions that I felt were important in terms of precedent and protecting the environment. So I would say, first of all, that I thought the ZBA decision, I wasn't on the ZBA, I'm not on the ZBA, but I did not agree myself with the initial decision because I felt that the least impactful method should be what all the boards in this village aim for in terms of granting the trade-offs that were granted in this initial application. So while the ZBA agreed to grant the smaller lots in the subdivision on the basis that in the village and in that particular section of the village, there were already lots that were smaller in size, that didn't fit the existing zoning. And so on that basis, they said, okay, that's fair. We'll do the three lots that are smaller because it doesn't, you know, go against the scheme that we have there already. But in doing that, I felt that they were charged with considering all the things that the boards in this village should consider, and especially the environment is one thing, the impact in the environment. And we had a lot of testimony about potential runoff from a hard surface driveway, the impact on the neighbors in terms of this disruption of putting in an additional road where there already was a road serving those three lots, and it was clearly within the length, you know, it didn't vary from what was allowed under our village code. So although it was a flag lot driveway serving three lots, that's something that exists in many places in the village. And since that road already existed, the idea of putting in a new road that was quite a wide and a long road seemed a bit of anathema to me. But on the basis that the ZBA granted that, in fairness to the applicant, I felt that, you know, that the planning board, while we had jurisdiction to say what type of road, and clearly in the decision, we could limit the width of that road, we could create more buffers for that road. So I thought that we were within our purview to do that. And in terms of reaching for the least impactful method, I thought that that was the direction that I would like to go. While the added value to the land of creating a Captain's Neck road is also a legitimate basis for granting that. So I didn't think we should necessarily disturb that, but I thought we should, based on all the testimony in this case about the environment, the potential runoff to Hetty from a hard surface, the idea of putting in the number of catch basins which were proposed, which disturbs the land, which may have been former farmland and may have aspects to it that are harmful to the environment, that we should reach for, and there was testimony that the applicant was willing to do a pervious surface. So I was, as one of the conditions, looking for a completely pervious surface, one that would have the least impact on the environment with a new coefficient that the applicant would submit as a new application to be reviewed by this board so that there could be many fewer catch basins and a surface that was allowed, you know, the water to run, the rainwater to run through it completely. And I think that was the most sensible solution if there was gonna be a road out to Captain's Neck. The other thing being that the ZBA said, as a, well, we may, we'll allow this road out to Captain's Neck, but I felt that definitely as a condition, then the road out to Hill Street from Lot 3 should be cut off and no longer exist as a shared driveway easement out towards Hill Street. And that had to be stated in my mind as a condition of granting this application, that there would be both plantings, because the village code requires plantings both for, to protect privacy between adjacent lots. As those three lots, adjacent lots, they would require additional planting, so you can't see between them, but also so that that road could not be used out to Hill Street any longer if we were granting a new driveway out to Captain's Neck. And that, again, that shared driveway out to Captain's Neck, if it were to be allowed, I thought there should be an easement covenant created, not by any of the lawyers for the applicant or anyone else, but a lawyer for the board, so that each time we have a shared driveway, there's the same elements. There are five elements that should be in a shared driveway easement. And I didn't see that in the proposed one, so I thought that our board should work on the same exact covenant where in, it's on the actual plat, that there's a shared driveway covenant between those two lots when it's sold to anybody in the future, whether it's an heir, an assign, or a third party that's being sold to, that should be a shared driveway. And the applicant should enter into an agreement and actually have a signed covenant that is notarized so that the village has some protection, that that road will be maintained as a joint driveway, et cetera. So I wanted to have that as a condition. And then also the applicant would agree that the only ingress and egress from Lot 3 in the future would be Captain's Neck lane. And that we would have a new proposal for a more environmentally friendly and less disturbing driveway potentially to the neighbors, which might require a larger buffer, unless there would be an agreement to a temporary easement by the neighbor so that there wouldn't be any encroaching on the shared property line. I thought that was an important condition. So basically, that, I thought that the application should be granted with those explicit conditions and that the applicant would have to come back with a proposal that met those conditions and including signing the easement, which our attorney would then review.
Okay, thank you.
And basically, yeah, that's, in terms of the time that has passed and the ZBA decision, I felt that that was gonna be the most equitable solution for the parties and the village.
Okay. Do you wanna? No? Yeah.
I'd just like to review, just so the record's clear, the documents and some of the things that the board has considered during this process and that has been made a part of the record. So just to clarify, the process involving this actually began back toward 2012. There has been a prior secret determination, and that determination was based upon a full environmental assessment form, EAF Parts 1 and 2 and 3. This was deemed a Type 1 action, and the determination with respect to secret was made in May, of May 1st, 2017. So a copy of that resolution and the papers that it was granted upon were previously made a part of this record. Additionally, while the board, there was discussion about whether or not the board is bound to follow lockstep, if you will, with the sketch plan approval. And I think this board made clear that you don't believe that you are, but I do want to mention that that sketch plan approval did occur. There was a decision, July 2nd, 2018. And that decision included a series of conditions. I believe there were five. I would suggest that any determination made by this board tonight should incorporate by reference, and certainly as a part of the record, the prior secret determination and the sketch plan approval. The planning consultant by subsequent memo to this board, which was then made a part of the record and remains in the record, confirmed that the conditions in the sketch plan approval had substantively been met. Just in terms of additional procedural background, there was mention of the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision. And that decision was rendered in or about October 26th of 2017. That, I would suggest, should also be incorporated by reference in any determination made by the board. The board members have had the opportunity to review that. And just so that the record is clear, a portion of the discussion that Member Bernstein was referring to regarding lots and lot sizes would be found, for example, on page 11 of that decision. These properties were also before the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation with applications seeking appropriate, or certificates of appropriateness with respect to demolition of certain structures. Those applications were previously granted. And that was the lead-in to the application made by counsel for the applicant, which came before this board in or about December 23rd of 2021. The public hearing then began in or about February 6th of 2023. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I also just want to review some of the other documents that are in the record. During the course of the progression here, there were approximately six updates from your planning consultant, and there were responses from the applicant. Just so the record's clear, and these are in the record, but as regards any decision made, by my count, there was a village planning consultant memo of February 23, 2022, which identified further items needed, in that case, the planting plan and driveway plan. September 16th of 2022, October 7th of 2022, January 6th of 2023, and April 20th of 2023, the board received responses from the applicants or their counsel with respect to each of those, which led to the determination by the final memo, as I previously mentioned, from your planning consultant. Also in the record are a series of documents from concerned residents, if you will, or neighbors in the area. They were represented by Mr. Jeffrey Bragman, as well as Ms. Linda Margolin. The, those, all of those documents have been available for the board's consideration and are a part of the record. The, I just want to review for the record what I believe the final set of documents that the board is asking to be considered are through the applicant. Should the board reach a determination tonight? The final set of amended plans, by my review, as submitted by the applicant, were dated March 29th of 2023, which included the following. There was drawing number C1, entitled subdivision plan, C2, entitled driveway plan and details, C3, entitled pre-construction erosion and sediment control and plan details, C4, which was entitled post-construction erosion and sediment control plan details, C5, which was entitled the conceptual sanitary site plan, a drawing of March 20th, 2023, entitled driveway drainage comparison plan. And also before the board for consideration would be the final plat, minor subdivision for dispatch, or the Saskas final plat, which from my review was last revised on August 11th of 2022. Issues that were raised and that were discussed included compliance with the comprehensive plan. And I think Member Bernstein was alluding to one of the items in that plan, which is the preference for roads rather than to go to a main artery to go to an interior artery. There was, and while the comprehensive plan is not regulatory, I believe that the board had, could consider and take into account that the part of what would happen as a result of this application, and as was mentioned in the ZBA decision as well, would be that there would be removing a prior, pre-existing nonconforming. But that's for the board to certainly consider. I did not know, based on the prior discussions before the board and the question of whether or not any conditions would be included and should the board move to approve. I don't know if that's the stage that the board is at, but if that is, I know that based on discussions with the planning consultant, there were a series of potential conditions that would be proposed, but certainly is for the board to deliberate. And if you wish, I could review what I've gleaned from the record.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Chairman? Okay. We haven't voted on an application in a long time, so I'm not quite clear about procedure. And I feel like we're at that point. And...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if the board is considering voting, I don't know. I know that Member Bernstein mentioned a series of conditions from a review of the record. If there were to be a vote on any sort of conditional approval, there were certain conditions that I believe had been either discussed or alluded to during the process, which I could suggest to the board or discuss with the board if you wish.
So I guess that's my question, like, do those conditions have to be agreed upon or discussed now? And then we vote after that?
If the board wishes, the board could entertain an application now, subject to a decision to be drafted by council with conditions to be reviewed and approved by the board. Not knowing how the board may be voting, but if that's the manner in which the board intends to proceed, for example, should the board vote to deny, that's a denial. Should the board vote to approve, but that you would then perhaps direct council to prepare conditions consistent with what Member Bernstein pointed out, to make sure that there's a timeframe, for example, for any covenants that are going to be prepared to frame out any further conditions for the board's consideration. And that could be, there could be a vote with that to be drafted and submitted to the board within any timeframe you set.
Okay. All right, are we ready?
Whatever you want, Chairman. You're in charge.
I think we're ready, so... I don't even know how to, I don't even know how to call it.
First, let me ask you this. If I may, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Mr. McFarland, your statement was pretty clear. Do you have a motion to make at this time?
Yeah, if it's appropriate, if you make a motion, I will make a motion that this board deny this application at this time.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Is there, then let's take a vote on that. There's a motion to deny the application before the board. Member Bernstein?
Well, I would like to approve the application, but only under the conditions that I detailed, which are about five conditions, right? So I don't know where everyone stands with the idea of the conditions that I outlined. But I would be prepared to approve, but only with those conditions.
Right, so, understood. So in terms of the motion to deny, would you be in agreement with that? Or you have a separate motion to make, which we can return to?
I'm not sure how to make my motion, if, you know, I'd like to persuade the board to...
I think you need to start at the other end of the table.
...with me with the conditions, but...
Okay, okay, so we'll start at the other end of the table.
Okay, yeah.
Ms. Cowell, do you have an application to make?
I have actually a statement, actually. And it's, as of very recently, I am currently involved in a transaction in which counsel for the applicant represents one of the parties. While I do not believe I have any legal conflict, in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I have decided to abstain from the decision.
Mr. London, do you have any motion to make, whether it's to deny, to approve, or approve with conditions?
Wait a minute, this is...
Which, whichever way you wanna go, Chairman.
No, I need to ask a question, because we have four voting members now, right?
Yes.
Okay. How does that play out?
It depends on the vote, so...
What if the vote is split?
If the vote is... If the vote is split, that would be a non-action by the board. And under the relevant statute, if there is no decision within 60 days from when the public hearing was closed, there would be a default approval.
A default approval?
Yes.
Alex, is that... Okay. So does the board understand that?
So if there's no action today?
And if 60 days goes by...
And the board doesn't take another vote or another action within 60 days, it's approved, I understand.
Within 60 days of...
When the public hearing was closed.
When the public hearing was closed.
Oh, okay, all right.
And...
What's that date?
I mean, would, do you re-vote?
The board, the board could vote. The board could hold another meeting and vote. The board could move to approve with conditions. The board could deny.
Do the con... So if it's a split vote, how do, how do the conditions get...
If it's a split vote and the matter is reconvened...
If it's, if, if it's not reconvened?
Then there would be no conditions set forth.
So it's an approval without conditions?
It would be a default approval.
Does everybody understand that?
No.
Clearly? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So... Understood. So maybe I'll start. Ms. Bernstein, you had indicated your thought that you would want to approve, and as I indicated before, there could be a motion to approve this with conditions to be drafted, subject to the approval of the board.
Yeah, I, that's my inclination. I, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it, but we're sort of stuck. We now have two motions, right? So doesn't Allen have to withdraw his in order to vote on what is...
He doesn't have to withdraw. We could take a vote on the motion that's now before the board.
Okay.
Ms. Cowell has abstained. Mr. McFarland, I assume, would vote nay on that, Mr. Chairman?
Nay.
Okay.
Mr. London?
On Willow's motion?
On Willow's motion.
Nay.
You voted nay?
Correct.
Okay, so then let me ask for a vote on Mr. McFarland's motion, which was to deny.
Yeah.
Mr. London?
Aye.
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 The application is denied. Would that be subject to a written decision to be prepared by the board?
We have, we, we need some form of writing.
May I have a moment, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if we can go and second speaker if you can. Why are we moving off the record? Whole thing's bizarre.
We have, unlike John and you guys, we have council who is new to the village, is primarily working for the zoning board, and has been assigned to this case at the 11th hour by conflict. And so I think he's catching up. He's very good, good man. He's talked to me a lot. I've talked to him, but he's catching up to the speeding train.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
So my other question is, would that be subject to a written decision for review by the board?
Yes.
Council, please note our objection to your leaving the room and going off the record to discuss the case outside of you, with the chairman. I don't know what that...
I have a client and I can speak to my client. And I don't believe, sir! Sir, I believe, sir! This was for deliberations. This was not for a public hearing. Sir, Mr. Bragman, I understand that, council.
You can't go off the record.
The motion to deny carried. I would ask if that could be writ, subject to written decision?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. That's all we have.
Excuse me, Mr. Blenckoff. So they were all eyes on that last motion?
Except for the abstaining member.
Yes. Thank you. I don't know if we have any other matters before the board?
For a written decision. I was just saying aye, that there should be a written decision. Since I, my condition, the... No, just thought that there be a written decision.
No, there were three votes to deny. Thank you. I don't know if there are any other issues before the board?
Uh, yes, there's, I believe, a couple of adjournment requests.
Just one.
And then, um...
Alex, give this to council.
Oh, it's a patent.
Don't do it. That's for you and one, uh, do, please.
I believe there was an adjournment request in the next meeting to be July 3rd. And then on fact, if you look at power, I think it's a request for adjournment to July 17th. And I believe the name you just said is already changed to July 3rd. Just a little bit of talk? Um...
Yes. Date?
July 17th, is that correct? So two, two pending adjournment requests, so two subject to these applications.
Okay. Is that day good, or do you want more time?
No, I think we'll be back with something fairly helpful and substantive. So thanks for your...
Okay, I'd like to...
Counsel, can you just clarify?
We're done. You can leave.
Mr. Bragman? No.
What happened?
The application was denied. Yes, now please let us finish our business. So I'd like to move that for the application of RRFACF LLC 550 Wickapaw Road, we grant a request to adjourn to the July 17th meeting, 2023. Can I get a second?
Second.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to also move that we grant an adjournment to July 3rd, 2023?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the only other thing on the agenda is whether the board has a chance to review the minutes from the May 15 meeting. And then there's just a note that the next meeting is going to be July 3rd, followed by July 17th because of the holiday. There's no other meeting in June.
Yeah, June 16th. I think I saw the May 15 meetings, and I had almost no comments of material.
Okay.
And, and do you have all the meeting, the comments for the...
Yes, I do, but the only ones that are up for approval tonight would be March 20th. And also, am I missing something about what happened with Merrick Holdings? Are we not doing that tonight?
That was approved already.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was on the agenda. I apologize. Okay, I'll take it off.
There was nothing new for, for that application.
Okay. So just March 20th, please.
Yeah, I went over those.
Okay.
So I'll move that be, I'll move that be approved.
Okay, I'll second it.
Aye.
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 So we'll be back here July 3rd?
Okay, thank you. I'll send you adjourned. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You make the buzz.